Teen. Thirteen are your receipts, which is all the receipts by the funds of where you get your general property taxes, your lit dollars and all the different areas broken down by the funds. And then fourteen through twenty-five is the expenses which are broken down in the normal categories of personal services, your supplies, services and charges, which are professional services and then capital outlay. And then page twenty-six through twenty-eight is just a listing of all your funds. They've added that up last year. I don't really know what the yo on that was, but anyways, it's just a listing of all your funds, which is the same thing that's listed on the very first pages. Then on page twenty-nine is your debt and all the different types of debt that we have. And then it also shows the beginning balances, the reductions, and then what's the principal amount that we're going to pay in in twenty twenty-four. And then the next page is your deficit balance. And normally, the only reason you have a negative balance is if you have a grant that's reimbursable, which we did. We did. We had two of them. So we submitted the expenses. And then we have to wait for the money to come in. So that's why they're negative, but you have to list that on there. And then the next page are your leases, which we have the Bobcat lease and we now have the town hall improvements, which is the RDA. That's a lease that we have to put on there. And then the next page are your transfers, which is your monies in and out of the different funds. So like we have an online account and so money comes in there and we have to transfer to the other. The same with our pilot, the payment lieu of taxes where we have to transfer that into the general and then make the payments on that. So those are the different things on your transfers. And then page thirty-five are the grants that we have. And again, it lists all the reimbursables. And then our ARPA grant was the one that we had received in advance and we had to use the rest of the fund.
And then. And then on page thirty-nine are your accounts receivable. So anything we can already do this year? Something new this year that we have to put on there was the accounts receivable. One, we have to give up the grant for the money that we're receiving. But we also have to put on there for utilities that are outstanding. That was a new requirement. On there. And then the last is your pensions with you participating first and then for seventy-seven. And then within the package as well, like I said, when transferred, we had to transfer some funds from like group one to group two or things like that. Those have to be approved. So we need approval of the report and including the transfer.
I don't have any. Questions in the back?
I don't have any. Be good reading.
Okay. So we need a motion to approve the financial report with the appropriations.
I'll make a motion to approve the annual financial report with appropriations.
Second. Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Beth. Next up, we have the Florrie Mae in chief, Mark Elder for the township fire department.
For just a minute. I'd be very, very grateful from you. You've got a the twenty-three year thinking. And I just want to say for the most collaboration that we have with in terms of and the total political particularly gotten us to the point where you're doing their way to resign and the other now it's it's real pleasure to stand in front of you and say that we are in a very, very stable place. And that she's going to speak to that. We were the recipients of so recipients who very much supports this here work in the state and work in the county. And not to doubt, we did that. So thank you.
Great job.
On the second page, going to go down to the very bottom with assistance is what I want people to realize tonight. Many people don't realize that if you have someone in your community who is in dire need of help, the township is where they need and we provide assistance for things, utilities. We provide assistance for we do not provide the money directly to the people who are in need. We provide it to the vendors. But we are there if people are in real trouble. On our website, there is an application document. It is also in a box right in front of our office. If anybody needs it, they can ask the committee directly, they can call Jenny directly in our office. We are also there to help if there's real medical need on those types of things. I won't go through the whole list, but I will say we had a a really difficult situation this year. We had some rough balance who were really struggling. There was hope just collapsing on them. And we were able to step in and provide immediate assistance until we could get the VA involved and and get proper assistance. So if there's ever anybody who needs help, send them. That's that's what we're working there for. If there's ever, if there's anybody who's homeless in the community, that's what we're. And the significance of what we do, of course, is on public safety, so I have with fire and US and the chief.
Thanks, Florrie.
Thanks, Florrie.
Why you doing that? Money more builder on part. Thank you for having me. Go briefly. You have two reports, one or three documents. The trust leaving one, just a summary. Then there's another one that is a little bit more into our department. We'll go into top six accomplishments we've had this year. Obviously, the first one is and we had twenty-four hour seven day coverage in the quarter of October twenty twenty-one. They were providing that coverage down to New Bonfire Station. They're on one street living in a modular home until we got the new station built last autumn. So two of them say we're in an actual building designed for twenty-four hour seven day coverage. But now we have a fire station local in North Side and South Side where we're trying to come through one end, the other is a burn stop. We purchased two manulances. One was a brand new unit. Of this, just either the time of getting parts and chassis and things like that, a little shit happen this year. And then the unit we were using as a reserve or a secondary unit was two thousand six international. We were offered an opportunity from Sugar Creek Township Fire Department by one of their reserve trucks that they were getting rid of. It's about ten years newer, had fewer miles, much better name than its record current. The one we had had bought, size continued from somewhere in Southern United States. So now the seventy-one percent of our runs being EMS in your area, five, we have two fairly new units, less than five years old, six years old, plus a good backup unit that's in reserve. Any use for special. We have started pre-planning what was called in the fly, it's called proactive planning, but it's bench creek naming center firefighters into all the local businesses in Burner Township. Some would be probably saying that are business owners. What does that do? That gets them inside and gets them familiar with the layout of the building, where their electrical panels are, if they have to get in there or they shut the power off, the gas off, where there may be some unseen hazards. It's benefit to them and it's a benefit to the business owners to more efficiently respond to. We've expanded our career staff. Happy to say that as of last week, we are fully staffed with career and reverse personnel. We have a maximum, our full staff is nine members on duty at bay between the two fire stations. Our minimum staffing is eight, so it allows one person off of the CPO, daytime off, big time and more detailed off training. We also were able to hire a director of administration of basically that position with reclassifieds and within the age of our payroll. HR has we now have thirty plus member career people since becoming more of a necessity. And we hired a legitimate support service person that here we care for them and some assets that provides maintenance on the buildings. By one care cemetery and a fire station, it's working very well. Okay, go to the next. We were fortunate to get over a hundred thousand dollars in purposes. One of the main things we were able to purchase with that was a from the FEMA Federal Government Management Agency grant. Lucas device is the brand name, but it's a chest compression device. So when somebody unfortunately presents cardiac arrest, it used to be we had to dedicate a person to each chest compression, dedicate a person to the ventilation. With this device, now we put this device on and we get there and it takes care of the chest compression for us. So we don't have to trade people out because somebody got worn out from doing that. As for carrying somebody down a staircase, we used to have stop compressions or stopping adequate compressions to get down. Now it doesn't stop. Once there, once that device is gone, it doesn't matter whether we have them straight up and down or straight flat, those chest compressions are persistent. So we were very fortunate with that. Next. Engaging in our community. Biggest thing here is our community events that we've gone to, plus CPR training. To plug in now, if your staff or your community needs CPR training, please reach out. We can provide that. Either at our location or if you will come to the business for the other facilities. We attended over thirty-four community events between the town and Fortville and Fortville. Eighty CPR cards were handed out and another forty individuals for CPR handles. Making a lot of good progress. Next. So the big picture, we'll just start there. We'll talk about fifty-five first response today. We have reduced our, and I don't know what it was before, because there was a lot of good record keeping prior to the formation of the fire territory. But our average response time now is six minutes and eight seconds. That is from the time our tones go off the fire station to the time our first piece of equipment is pulling up on to six minutes and eight seconds. And that's the average time. There's times that are better now and but when we have to go to some of the more remote areas, it takes a little while. Again, over three hundred fire prevention inspections. We have a group of people we call the Fire Corps. If you've not heard of them, they're citizen volunteers that want to get back to the community, but they don't necessarily want to fight fires or go enough. They respond to our scenes and provide rehab, drinks, snacks on our prolonged business that we made that available to other departments in the county. They also attend our community events, the in-house fire helmets and thicker covering with if you see them in their orange T-shirts, that's the fire. We responded to one thousand six hundred eighty-one incidents both last year. Now, from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, that was about a one percent increase. I can tell you that as of yesterday, our runs were were a twenty-two percent increase from twenty twenty-three. And I don't haven't dealt dealt down into the numbers to figure out what that was. But the numbers of the runs are up twenty-two percent so far this year. We continue to pay for on over on over two thousand calls for and we have seven thousand, over seventy-four hundred training agents. We fired up for any and that has math, rescue. Whatever leadership, right? Oh, reiterate again, this compliment, we have our station on both sides of the road, which I look at. For us, for all of us. And we couldn't have done that and put him that side without partnerships that have been created between the town and Fortville, the Queens, the town of Fortville and Queens, downtown. We appreciate all of that, all of you that you've helped us with and we look forward to continuing with our partners. Any questions?
I think you guys have done a great job. I've I've, it's been very enlightening to me and I've really enjoyed it. It's been really informative, things that I never knew, you know, it was it's it's a great, you guys are just doing such a good job. Okay. Okay, next up, we have a resolution twenty twenty-four dash two A, amending and restating resolution seventeen two A. And this is concerning decorum and debate in public meetings and executive sessions. Alex, you want to walk us through that?
Sure. So some of you may remember both up here and maybe out there, several years ago, back in twenty seventeen, the council adopted a resolution that set some initial rules and guidelines for just kind of decorum about how the council wanted to handle things among members, how they presented, how they treated each other, confidentiality of executive sessions and so forth. All those are still contained here. The addition that was brought or the two additions that were raised and asked to be incorporated into these and into this rule were E and F. And just for the public's edification and the council's as well. E reads, no member shall make statements stating the position or policy of the council without having a majority vote of the council that establishes that position or policy. And F is, it reads, to avoid conflicts of interest or the appearance of a conflict of interest. Members shall not make comments in their capacity as a member of the council with respect to town matters that directly impact the member's business or the business owned or operated by the member's family. A member wishing to comment on a matter covered by this subsection shall do so from the podium and not from the member's seat at the council table. So those are the two changes or additions to the rules that were adopted back in twenty seventeen. Vanessa had a good question as well about Robert's Rules of Order and how those apply years and years ago predates me. The the town council adopted Robert's Rules of Order as the default, but leaves open the possibility for changes such as these types of rules that fit what works best for Fortville. So Robert's rule is still there, but the way that the town has adopted those allows for these types of kind of exceptions to those rules.
Questions, anybody?
Pretty straightforward.
Okay. So we need to make a motion then to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash two A.
Our second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. There is no old business. So we go to department, Joe?
Yeah, I only have a couple of quick items this evening. And I think everybody's aware that crews have been out flushing hydrants. They've been out for a little over two weeks. They've probably got two to three more weeks. They'll have them all finished up. They're about a third of the way done. So they're making pretty good progress. When when they start flushing these hydrants, unfortunately, some of the issues we're trying to address is some of the discolored water. But as they start to flush these hydrants, it stirs it up a little bit more. So until they get through the entire system and flush everything out, we're going to continue to see some of that discoloration coming along. The other thing is we've been working on a water meter changeout program for a few years now. And I'm very happy to say that there's only two meters left in their system that has not been changed out. One is because it's a building that may be getting ready to be demolished. And the other one needs to be dug up and shut the water off the main order to get to it because it needs a valve replaced. So with those new meters, and I know that the workload is kind of heavy right now to get all the training and stuff in, but with those new meters, it's my understanding that customers will be able to access some of their data and maybe see their usage and some different things and be able to get some reporting back. So we're we're looking into that to see what we can do to offer that to the community as well. And that's all I've got this evening, unless you've got something for me.
Anything for Joe? Adam is obviously not here. Patrick? Oh, he's not here either. I don't think so. Patrick?
First of all, I want to thank the street department. I know Friday was kind of a, we got a lot more snow than expected. I know our cars were busy, but the majority of the calls that our cars ended up taking were either on the county or on the state road. And our guys did a good job making sure stuff was at least passable, because I know in times forty, seventy, fifty-two, nine, one oh nine, all those were basically shut down. So and then I want to thank the officers that stayed over that evening to help out with the county calls, because three of them volunteered to stay over and help out because the county was just hammered. So thanks to our street guys and the street, thanks to the officers that worked that evening. And then I have a year-end review for twenty twenty-three for the public's knowledge, just for transparency purposes of our calls for service and some of the highlights from last year and some of the goals for this year. If Andy can queue it up. Maybe. There we go. Whoa. Maybe.
He was acknowledging the maybe.
Yes. It's thinking. That's not the one I need. Yeah. It should have said the highlights. Give him one job. There was one that just had all the highlights. We don't need to go through page by page by page of the thirty-plus pages of the report.
Thank you.
Yeah. I can't sing. You don't want that. Well, unless it's hidden in the FPD officer pics. There was a PowerPoint on there. I'm sure.
What?
And that's the full report and then.
How's your memory?
No, my memory's all right.
Hey, you can read it off.
Get rid of my office and see if there's another survivor stick in there, please. Thank you. He's not running. That's all right. So basically, a lot of this is just numbers of revenue generated, money spent, money's raised for shop of public safety. I I do a pretty detailed report every year of all of our calls for service, the breakdown of calls, all the important numbers of how many domestics and OWIs and traffic stops and warnings written and tickets warning and tickets written and I mean, there, there's a lot of data there for the past three years. We didn't really track our weapons arrests in twenty twenty-one. Twenty twenty-two, we had eleven. Twenty twenty-three, we had seven, but we had limited data because when we get at possession of a stolen firearm, it gets entered as possession of stolen property. So we're not able to track that unless it specifically states firearm. So and we're going to try this one here. See if I gave you the wrong one earlier today. I apologize. That's not it either. That's all right. I can go over, just go back to that other one. We can go over it briefly. I can just tell you to skip pages. Whatever to whatever. So stay back up on that, please. Thank you. Traffic stops weren't ever recorded. Last year, we did twenty-eight hundred and one traffic stops. We have limited data for percentages, whether that was up or down. Our citations, we were up a little bit. I think that was due to the fact of this sixty-seven project. We probably wrote some more speeding in construction zone areas and then people on side streets running stop signs and things like that. We gave out seven hundred and forty-eight traffic warnings compared to two hundred and eighty-five tickets last year. So about one out of every four persons who get stopped ends up with a ticket. OWI arrest, I don't know where that one hundred and eleven percent came in at, but that is not a good number. I think it's actually about a two percent number. We're down, but that's about average lately. Thirty-eight, thirty-seven narcotics arrests are up. Juvenile arrests were seriously up just because we put officers in the schools and there's more vaping and more THC and narcotics that we're seeing now through the vapes that are in there. It's usually a THC vape that they get and we have the ability to test whether it's CBD or actually THC. We have a testing process to be able to determine whether it's under the point oh three or it's above the point oh three state law that we can determine that now. And we didn't have that before that could differentiate either it had some or none. That was the way we had it. And now there's new technology out there that can can analyze that on the spot and give us that data. So I believe that's probably part of the reason the juvenile arrests went up is we we got that new technology to be able to differentiate between the whether it's a THC above the legal limit or CBD below the legal limit type of thing. Adult arrests were about average. Warrant arrests were about average. And then, like I said, weapons arrest, we have limited data just because we can't track the possession unless the officers put it in or dispatch puts it in as possession of a stolen firearm. It usually just comes out possession of stolen property. Go down a little bit, Andy. All right. So we always do a shop of public safety event. As everybody knows, it's one of my favorite days of the year. We get to go play and and have fun and take the kids to McDonald's and take them shopping. This year, we raised twelve thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars and a penny through the help with everyone in the community. We don't use tax dollars for that. We send out just letters every year requesting the the people in the town and the business owners to to if they can give to give. And if not, you know, we'll make it work. We'll figure it out. But this year we did that. We did spend sixteen thousand forty-five dollars and sixty-five cents. Part of that was sent down to the Hancock County FOP, twenty-five hundred dollars of that because they had several families in need that the Greenfield Police Department couldn't handle their needs. So they sent them to the FOP and then we assisted with that because we had a pretty good balance still. And our our current balance is twenty-eight thousand six hundred eighty-four dollars and eighty-three cents, which I think is great. Our community really pulls together and and helps out when people are in need. And we try to maintain a decent balance. So if we, we don't have to keep going and asking and asking that way, if there's years that people just can't do it, or if it's tough on businesses like we had a couple of years ago and we don't get the donations, we can still fund that shop of public safety event. We replaced one full-time officer, hired one administrative assistant last year. We received the bulletproof vest grant again, which is a fifty percent matching grant. We applied for that over and over and over because vests are about eleven hundred dollars apiece. And it's required, we replace them every five years for every officer. That's what the Department of Justice states we have to do. So if we can get some additional federal funding for that, we do. We also maintain the SRT grant, which is a small rural tribal grant for funding for our body camera and our upgrades. We replaced and implemented all new body cameras worn by all the officers. That's another expensive item that we have to purchase and it's for transparency purposes. Strictly, there's no mandate that says we have to do it, but you know, I like for people, if they want to come in and watch the video of how they were acting that night, if they got arrested, they can see that because some people just simply don't remember. Or if they have a complaint against an officer, I can say, come on in, let's review the body camera footage. And then they are like, oh, I don't want to put that complaint out there or yes, I want to continue with that. If they do, that's great. If they do, that's great. Um. We replaced all the AEDs and the patrol cars, which are the advanced external defibrillators. Um, that was funded by the RDC. They assisted us with that. They had some monies that they were uh, willing to let us have so we can get all the new updated AEDs, which is in line with the fire department. So now we have the exact same equipment as they do. So if we show up first and we have our unit on them, they don't have to pull anything off, switch anything out. They already know how to use it. We're completely compliant with each other. So we understand what technology everybody's using. Uh, all officers got certified in tactical medical aid procedures. Uh, we certified two officers in critical incident training and that is when someone has um a tough day, mental health breakdown or something like that. Officers are specially trained. It's a week long course on training on how to handle subjects who may have some mental deficiencies. They may be going through a tough time. They may have alcohol or drug abuse problems. But it, it teaches the officers different ways to handle that and approach that situation where it used to be, we would think, you know, they're tough to deal with. We got a criminal code on them. Let's just go toss them in jail. Let the jail deal with them. Well, that's not the way it should be done. The way it should be done is, you know, the officer should show some compassion if they're having a tough time and get in there and and really try to work through some of these problems and find other alternatives. So I'd say about eighty-five percent of the, the department is certified now. Uh, we just put a couple of new people on. They're not certified yet, but there is a class coming up, I think in May. Uh, we assisted in all town sponsored activities, which is Summer Fest, Treats on Main, Winter Fest, and then we, there's two not-for-profits in town, which is Cami's Cause. And then Blazer eighty-eight, which is a veterans foundation. We assist them every year. Um, cause I feel like they're both very important, ones for veterans, ones for um Kami and was that four P? Yeah, okay. I would, for some reason I keep thinking four K, but that's a TV. But um, so we like to do that. We've done it for years. Even when Kami's Cause first started, we kind of helped them out. And then they went up to American Legion Park and we'd pop in there and help them out when they needed it. So go ahead and scroll down, Andy. Keep going. Keep going. Uh, we didn't have anybody on the SWAT team this past year. I am anticipating two officers trying out this year, but it is a Hancock County Joint Tactical Team. So members from fire departments, members from McCordville, Greenfield, Hancock County. New pal. Us, we all have spots on there. So we can staff specially trained officers to join the, the HCJTT, which is basically the SWAT team. They're the guys we call when we need help. Um, so, but they trained for a total of a hundred and ninety-two hours. There were no injuries to officers due to callouts. And no suspects were injured either this year. Um, some chemical munitions were used, uh, which is their gas, just like if they have a high risk search warrant or something, or a high risk arrest warrant, there's somebody in there, they'll throw some tear gas in there and people usually come out uh, once their nose starts running a little bit. So um, the closest one, we didn't have any in Fortville. The closest one was on ten fifty north, just outside of town that they were activated for. So scroll down, please. Uh, fatal accident crash team. We do have two members on that. It used to be called the fatal alcohol crash team. Um, but now it's just called the fatal accident crash team because not only now is there a possibility of drugs in someone's system, there's also drugs and alcohol, or if they had a medical problem, maybe they had a cardiac arrest while they were driving and hurt and killed themselves or hurt and killed someone else. We investigate all that. So we have two certified accident officers on the fact team. They responded to nine callouts. Uh, go ahead and scroll down and we had zero fatality accidents. Use of force. Um, so not every handcuffing situation is a use of force. A lot of times we say, hey, turn around, put your hands behind your back. You're going to go to jail. They turn around, put their hands behind the back and they go to jail. When they do have to, when the officers do have to use any sort of force, whether it's a wrist lock, whether they end up in a fistfight with the person, whether it's a canine apprehension, they use a taser or whatever, they have to document that on a completely separate form. That gets reviewed by our department instructors who are all state certified by the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy. And then um, if anything's questionable, I will send it outside for review for another agency to review, to review our policies, to make sure they're within policy and make sure they're within state law. Uh, this year we had ten uses of force, four empty hands, which would be a wrist lock or something like that. Uh, a vehicle pursuit for us is a, is a use of force, even if they get away and we don't crash any cars, we don't do anything, it's still a use of force. Because we're driving faster and we're trying to catch the bad guy. We had one taser deployment, which was used in Ingalls. Uh, zero deadly force and one canine deployment, which were assisted another agency where the canine apprehended the suspect. Go ahead. Accidents. So we took a hundred and four accident reports last year. Um, there were only sixteen total reported injuries of those accidents. And after reviewing all the accident data that we had on the hundred and four accidents, I'd say the majority of the reasons were driver distracted, driver inattention. Um, unsafe lane movement, which crossing the lane where you shouldn't be or following too closely. Those are the majority of our accidents, probably eighty percent of them. And driver distraction could be your cell phone. It could be your children being loud and you were trying to take care of that. You were messing with the radio, something like that. But uh, that was the majority of them. Uh, we also responded to twenty-four additional accidents, but we didn't take accident reports. The drivers exchanged information. If the damage is under fifteen hundred dollars, state law says drivers can exchange information and then they let their insurance or somebody pays out of pocket or however they want to do it. We don't do the report and we don't send it off to the state. Go ahead. Um, alright, so my goals coming up in twenty twenty-four. Obviously to continue to build partnerships within the community. We want to host one coffee with a cop function. We're going to increase our reserve unit by two. We can get qualified candidates. We were approved this year for two new full-time officers. We've currently hired one in Chase Simpson, which everyone met the beginning of the year. Uh, the other one will come on board in July. There are three officers currently not CIT trained that I want to get CIT trained. Um, every year, the county hosts a national night out event, which is at the fairgrounds. We hand out book bags and books and notepads and paper and pencils and crayons and everything right before school. Walmart is a big donor to that. Um, so we all kind of go there and we put on our presentations and shine up the cars and do all that, but we hand out book bags right before school and it's really welcomed in the community um, all over Hancock County because some people just don't have the means to be able to do that. So with our partnership with Walmart, Walmart and a few other things, we're able to do that. Uh, we met at our last chief's meeting at the end of the year. All the police chiefs get together with the prosecutor and talk about what we want to do to make things better for our, our community. And we all decided that multi-agency training within the county for various training tasks is, is one that we want to do. Cause currently Greenfield trains on the same things we train on, but they may do it on a different day. So we're going to try to combine some of that and pull off our resources, not only to save um, tax dollars on overtime and things like that. But uh, it also gives us a different perspective. If we've trained the same way for the same time for the flat past five years, we get a new instructor come in, he'd be able to tell us, or she may be able to tell us a new way to do things. So I want to reduce property crimes with more aggressive proactive patrols in neighborhoods. I'm going to host a meet the chief night because I think a lot of people probably know of my name, but have really never sat down to talk to me. So I think that's important. We're going to participate in all the town sponsored events. Um, so Laura, my assistant, we're going to obtain a SEGA's designated compliant link for her to run driver's license and vehicle registration since she can do our vehicle releases and it keeps the officers on the road. But currently she has to call dispatch and wait for them and do all that. So we have to do that with dispatch. And then of course, we're going to continue the tradition of having shop of public safety. So that's it in a nutshell, out of the thirty-some pages that I have, I'm open to any questions from the public, the council, anything like that. Sorry, I took more than ten minutes, but I feel it's important for everybody to kind of know where we're at, what we're doing.
Yeah, I agree. We appreciate all of you.
That was brief compared to thirty-six pages.
Okay, Missy is not here. Alex, do you have anything else for us?
I don't, unless you have questions for me.
I do not.
Nope.
Public comment? Would anybody like to say anything? Okay. So I need a motion to approve and sign vouchers. Oh, do we have council comments? I'm sorry. I, excuse me.
What did we have?
It was the, the gentleman with the uh horses getting the special exception.
Oh yeah, that's right. Yeah.
Oh, that, that was my proof. I forgot that. So I'll bring that to the next council meeting. I apologize.
We'll make a note of it.
Okay. Council comment?
Let me start with me. Libby? Um, I got to go to um, I had a couple of meetings since our last meeting. Um, as y'all know, I'm part of the recycle Hancock County or the waste management district, blah, blah. But anyway, recycle Hancock County is what they call it now. Um, they had a re, a shoe recycling program that they engaged with the elementary schools. I think it was, it might've been all the schools. One Mount Vernon School uh, contributed. Anyway, they raised, or they collected seven thousand pairs of shoes. Wow. And they take them, I don't know if anyone has been to or knows of the changing footprints in um, Greenfield. It's on the corner of um, what is that? Forty? I don't know if they call that Main Street there or yes, um, and Franklin Streets. Anyway, it's this cute little building. They called me today and said, hey, um, if you know anyone that needs shoes, they have so many shoes available. He said, brand new. Tons of women's fashion boots and cowboy boots and work shoes and tennis shoes. And um, I said, oh, okay. Um, well, I'll pass that along. And he said, well, no, no, you should come and shop. Um, it's free. And so it's not just for people in need. I mean, come on, guys. What girl doesn't need a new pair of shoes? Um, but if you know anyone that needs new shoes, if you need some shoes, they're not all new. They're gently used. But um, they've got lots and lots of shoes. So I thought I would share that with you. And then I also went to a, with the same group, she had invited someone from IDIM in um, to learn about clean communities. Um, it's just a designation that um, the state awards communities for achieving certain things that um, you know, help our environment and whatnot. And Hancock County as a whole um, meets several requirements to come in as a silver tiered person. Anyway, you'd get a sign and a flag and all that fun stuff. And um, selfishly, I didn't want to do it with just the, the Hancock County. I wanted Fortville itself to do it because we have our gardens. We've got um, we meet a lot of the things. And I think it'd be nice to have a sign and a flag that say we're like a tree city, you know, we've got, we've got flags and signs for that. So anyway, I'm working with Kenny and um, other communities in Hancock County to achieve that goal. So yeah, that's what I've been up to. Oh, and lastly, I'd like to say thank you for the snow removal. Um, there was no way we could have kept up with that. I came, it took me an hour and a half to come from Keystone at the Crossing that night. Um, I did not come into Fortville thinking our streets should have been cleared. Um, but it, they did a great job. They were up all night working on the roads and I, I appreciate it. Um, I know my sidewalks in front of the store were clear um, that next day because you guys took care of that. So thank you. Yeah. That's it. Right.
I don't have anything tonight.
Um, I had a, a suggestion that I'm, I'm hoping the town council will consider. There is a crosswalk that is crossing Broadway Street at Merrill and it's the only way to get across Broadway right now. And so uh, I was thinking that it might be good for us to enhance that crosswalk temporarily. Um, you know, the construction is scheduled to end in November, but the warm weather is going to be coming on soon. And you know, the, the farmer's market will be starting and all that kind of stuff. The crosswalk as it is right now, um, it's not really functioning. It's not, it's not achieving the outcomes of what a crosswalk is for. The cars aren't stopping at all for it. I know because I live on that corner and I go across it every day. Um, the, there's a bridge that goes over the construction kind of trench and that's fine. Um, there's paint, you know, there's been a crosswalk that's been painted. Uh, that paint has totally faded. The cars just fly by. There are the marquee signs that I think people see on Broadway that say, you know, attention, there's a crosswalk coming up, but the cars don't pay attention to that. When I'm on Broadway, I don't pay attention to that because you can't see where the crosswalk is. It's actually quite invisible. And so this would be temporary because I don't think there's going to even be a way to cross Broadway at Merrill when it's done, right? Like that's actually, that's actually not, you know, this.
Doesn't need a crosswalk.
Right. It, this is like a, a temporary thing. If that's, if that's where it is right now, if that's how you cross Broadway, you know, to get from south to north or vice versa for the duration of the construction, then I think it would be useful for us to consider enhancing it with the sort of things that crosswalks usually have, like where you press a button and lights start flashing or you know, motion detected and lights start flashing, that kind of stuff. Cause the cars are just flying by. It doesn't, it's not doing anything. We may as well just, you know, we may as well just take down the marquee signs the way it is right now. So that was my idea. I think that would be something that would be on us as a town to consider. I don't, I'm not suggesting this has anything to do with Indot's construction. They laid out a crosswalk. I, I imagine their obligation is fulfilled. I did have one thought though, in terms of cost savings, that if there is some kind of blinky light equipment that's part of the construction bill of material, maybe we could look into procuring that sooner and in placing it and being prepared to kind of move it to wherever it needs to go later, like just so that we can have it and start using it sooner. I would think there would be some kind of blinky light equipment for new crosswalks, since the whole construction is to make Broadway more walkable. Um, but maybe, maybe there is, maybe there isn't. I, I haven't seen the bill of material to know. Um, but that's my suggestion. It would ju, I hate to spend money personally, but I think that is a thing that would make sense to do. Um, but it's for consideration. And then if we like that idea, then I guess we could go figure out how to, how to get it done.
I think they're going to paint the crosswalk. Didn't he say in April, they're going to repaint it?
I've actually talked to Indot and I think they're waiting for the weather to get decent. So if it gets dried off, they'll, they'll re-stripe it. And they were going to look in her yard and see if they had any additional signs that they could put out to help identify the crosswalk. Now the blinky signs that you're talking about, those are actually mounted on a concrete base with a bolt sticking up just like the streets like, streetlights would be. So those will be more of a substantial mounting. So, and I don't even know if they have those acquired yet. Those are like, they're ordering the lights and stuff now and they're they're big crossarms for the traffic lights and the uh, streetlights, they're all on order. So I think they're slowly getting some of that stuff in.
Right. And like, if it's already getting ordered and it's just, just can't happen yet, that's, that's fine. It's just it, you know, the other thing is it's kind of dangerous out there. So you just have to wait. There is no point trying to cross and thinking, you know, I'll just start going and maybe the cars will stop. They will not. So, you know, it's, so that, that's, you know, you know what I'm saying? There may as well not be a crosswalk there. Even if they repaint it, I don't think that's going to help. So that's just something to consider, especially as people start walking around more when it gets warmer, farmer's market, et cetera. So.
And I can appreciate your, you know, concern, your comment because actually before the project started, there was four lanes of traffic with extra wide lanes and all these driveways and kids were just darting across like Frogger, trying to get across. And that is kind of what the project's for is to kind of make it more pedestrian friendly to help folks cross the street.
Right. And what I'm describing is what I assume it will be like when it's done, wherever the crosswalks are. And I'm just proposing that we do whatever it takes to make it more like that in the interim at that crosswalk, if that's all there's going to be.
Maybe, I've, I've seen where they have like on top of the signs, the things that spin around in the wind.
The thing on, what about the thing on one thousand, right on Garden Street? Like I, they just added those things, felt like that. That's a, that's a great idea. That would do it. Cause I noticed those just went in at one, one thousand and crit, crit. They say since Cynthia, yeah.
It's our four hundred west, Hemlock County, Cynthia.
Oh, for the railroad crossing and everything.
Yeah, well, right there.
Yeah.
Well, one, one thousand in Cynthia with the twirly things. And then they have it up again at Cynthia and uh, one oh fourth, right? Those.
Cause the stop signs are hard to see when you're coming in on the.
That's a great idea. That I think would probably.
Cause I mean, that really caught my eye when I was going through there the other day, those.
Thank you.
And I want to thank the town again for doing the good job on the roads. I, it also took me an hour and a half to get from Indianapolis that night. When I got here, it was clear.
It happened really fast. I mean, it was like four to five, boom. Yeah.
They did a great job.
Drop like that too, and they froze. If it would have stopped about three o'clock with all the pre-treating and the salt and stuff was down, they wouldn't have had to do anything. But with But with the, no, that just came down all of a sudden and the temperature dropped and it was a perfect condition. I mean, it was, it was slick and nasty all around.
It was nice. I think the kids got home from school right before it started sticking. So that was real nice.
Okay, so now I need a motion to approve and sign vouchers.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign vouchers.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven twenty-four.
A second.
Few seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.